...council agenda, township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, regular township council meeting of September 25th, 2025. Introduction posting a notice, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the boardroom board at the municipal building on September 15th, 2024, which remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the daily record on September 18th, 2025. May I ask everyone to please stand for a flag salute?
We stand as citizens of the United States of America, and we are a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, business administrator Jamie Cryon, municipal attorney Michael Lavery, and municipal clerk, Colette Madden, council president. We have a quorum. Can we begin?
Yes, please.
Fantastic, thank you. Upcoming meetings, October 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM is the agenda meeting, and then October 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM is the regular meeting. At this time, we're going to go into a quick executive session. We don't anticipate any action to be taken. It shouldn't be more than 10 or 15 minutes. With that being said, executive session resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Pail, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, whereas the township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss foreign client privilege, affordable housing matters, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved, the township, by the township council of the township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn and to go into closed session, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella.
Roll call. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
We're now going to adjourn into closed session. Actually, wait, wait, let's go back on the record before I do that. All right, can I please have a motion to reconvene to open session?
Make a motion. Second. Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
We're back into open session. Okay, moving along to ordinance, oh, I just have a report for closed session.
Sure, we emerged from executive session at 7:30 PM where we discussed one pending litigation matter dealing with affordable housing. No official action was taken. Copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the council determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Lavery. Moving along to ordinances, second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2025-17, ordinance of the township council of township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, and the county of Morris, New Jersey, amending ordinance 2025-11, authorizing the acquisition of, the acquisition by purchase of properties located in the township through the Township Open Space Recreation Flood Plan Protection and Foreland and Historic Preservation Program. The notice for ordinance 2025-17 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, on July 28th, 2025, and introduced at the July 22nd, 2025, regular meeting. May I please have a motion to accept ordinance 2025-17 that is heard in its second and final reading?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, moving along to the public hearing. May I please have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion. Second. 2517, motion by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
So at this time, the floor is open on this ordinance only. If you have anything on this ordinance, please come up. Okay, seeing no one, may I please have a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2025-17? Motion by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution above for orders 2025-17?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll, oh no, Mr. Musella, sorry.
Come on, Colette, don't get that wrong.
So, so, it's back to McGrath. Um, roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to the public session, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, the floor is open to the public. You can speak on any matter. Please just state your name, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Charlie Fasano, 41 Robin Hood Road, Morris Plains, New Jersey. I left with the clerk, I don't know whether he got these pictures or not, but this gentleman at 75 Moraine is creating a safety hazard. I stopped with the UPS truck, I would have hit two kids coming off with their electric vehicles. I stopped to see who the UPS driver was, make sure it's safe, you have no line of sight. This gentleman keeps his car parked there whether you put up signs or not. So, I don't know, how it's going to be taking, are we going to wait till the last minute when somebody gets hurt? Because we put up the football signs going parked here, don't do nothing. He hasn't moved. Second issue, I brought this up, I just made this, the stormwater collection sites, the drums in the car, it actually attached to the stormwater. This pump requires an electric, so turn around, excuse me, it's a 55 gallon drum, it'll hold in the bottom approximately 100 pounds of water. Your second sleeve will go, is 35 gallons, you can pick it up and just attach to the stormwater system, it'll turn on, collect it with your plastic bottles. projected cost on this, I'm coming in about 200 bucks. Now, like I said, this would have to be taken off in the winter, this is the smallest one I've built, this is an inch and a half, I normally build, I'll build them at four inches. This is not my design, it's nickel and Tesla's. It turns around, this will probably pump about 60 gallons an hour. And then you can return that back into the river, or actually, you know, the suggestion I put some road up, to help save your fish, put an aerator sprinkler on it, so it turns around, aerates the water before it goes back in. The drum is in the car if anybody else wants to see it. Prototype, it's got handles, and this way, actually, the garbage man, instead of breaking them back through, make a hook, use a winch, pull the container right out. If you look at a pool, when you turn around, you see pool screeners, so take that and make it 50 gallon gallons. It's going to use the same board house.
I think you should go on Shark Tank.
I gotta go nine more, nine more four inch systems. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Corinna G. Kumanekas of 370 Hillside Avenue, Allenville, New Jersey. I stand before you as the owner and founder of a woman-owned small business, Anthea Labs. Anthea Labs is a research testing laboratory, which is also seeking licensure from the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission to conduct analytical testing.
I need you to speak up there in the back, they came here.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Am I, is that better?
A little bit.
So, it's.
He's gonna raise it.
Raise it.
Or you can take it out.
So, Anthea Labs is a research testing laboratory, which is also seeking licensure from the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission to conduct analytical testing of cannabis and cannabis products. I would like to formally petition the council to remove or reduce the cannabis application and licensing fees and requirements introduced in ordinance 2025-08 as applied to cannabis testing laboratories. In 2022, Anthea Labs, then under the name Biometrics, set out to find a town that would allow operation of an analytical testing lab, lab that would also test cannabis. Given its central location, with easy access throughout the New Jersey and accessibility to local scientific community, we felt Precipiny would be an ideal location and sought local support from the township as part of our NJ CRC license application process. In May of 2022, Robert Garafalo served as our attorney, and went through the entire zoning process for Anthea Labs. At the time, Mr. Marqueta served as special counsel for the township of Precipiny, and wrote the attached letter to my attorney stating, "It is our opinion that your client's application for cannabis testing and associated research facility in the township's planned office district is permissible pursuant to 430-151 of the Township Code. Please note that in addition to possessing the requisite licensure, Biometrics must comply with all applicable zoning regulations associated with research facilities in the planned office district." Mr. Marqueta further stated that cannabis testing laboratories are not cannabis establishments, excuse me, establishments, or cannabis businesses, as those are defined in the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistant and Marketplace Modernization Act, otherwise known as the CREAM Act. Instead, the CRC has exclusive authority over the licensure of testing facilities under NJAC 1730-18 and 19. Municipalities have no regulatory role in the accreditation of licensing of such laboratories. In October 2022, Anthea Labs LLC received a zoning permit as POD that specifically states type of business as office and research testing facility. Mr. Marqueta later drafted the resolution of local support for Anthea Labs, which unanimously approved and approved at the December 2022 council meeting and signed resolution of support was provided. In the subsequent years, we have made considerable investment in Precipiny, building out the laboratory and hiring staff for, to prepare for operation. Nonetheless, Chapter 119 of the Township Code has amended by ordinance 2024-21 and 2025-08 imposes a $25,000 non-refundable application fee and a $35,000 initial and annual renewal fee on cannabis testing laboratories. These fees exceed the township's statutory and regulatory authority under the New Jersey CREAM Act, directly contradict the township's own prior legal interpretation, and impose an arbitrary and excessive burden on testing facilities that serve as essential public health and safety function. Moreover, under NJAC 1730-5.1, municipal fees must be reasonable based on administrative costs associated with issuing permits or authorizations. No administrative, no such administrative costs exist in connection with cannabis testing laboratories, as the CRC retains sole jurisdiction over their licensure. By contrast, by contrast, other municipalities within the state have recognized this distinction and established either no fees or far more reasonable fee structures for cannabis testing laboratories. Cannabis testing laboratories currently operating in Riverdale, Arlington, and New Brunswick do not pay cannabis application and licensing fees.
30 seconds.
And labs in Mount Laurel face far more reasonable application fees of $1,000 and licensing fees of $4,000. I have provided Precipiny with the cannabis application along with $30,000 for my, but I've been through this process before. So, once again, Anthea Labs is a multidisciplinary research and testing facility. I'm not only testing cannabis, I'll be testing for Legionnaires, I'll be testing PFAS. So, the imposition of these fees is inconsistent with state framework contrary to the township's 2022 legal advice.
May I?
So I respectfully ask.
Bob Venedzie of Precipiny. Whether to grant a pilot or not mainly depends on the answer to the following question. Is the benefit to Precipiny worth the price that the township must pay by forfeiting tens of millions of conventional tax dollars over a 30-year period? Mayor Barberio made his opinion clear when he stated at the last council meeting that without forfeiting tens of millions of dollars for a pilot, the developers simply won't build in Precipiny. First, I would like to emphasize to the council and the public the magnitude of the dollars that Precipiny has already given up and seemingly will continue to give up in the future. Tens of millions of dollars is not just some number that Bob Venedzie pulled out of the air. Take a look at the financial spreadsheet for Avalon Pilot at 2 and 3 Campus Drive that I handed out. The net revenue that Precipiny will receive from the pilot is $53 million compared to conventional taxes of $110 million. According to Avalon's own estimate, the taxpayers of Precipiny will forfeit tens of millions of dollars, 57 million to be exact. To put that amount into perspective, consider the fact that the past few years, Precipiny has been unable to build a much-needed new library in Lake Hiawatha. With an extra 57 million in conventional taxes, you can build five libraries without having to bond for them. And 57 million is for only one pilot. Add in the forfeited pilot tax money from 1515 Route 10, and now we're over 100 million. Just in 100 million for two pilots in lost revenue. Add in the dollars for future pilot giveaways, and the dollars that Precipiny is not collecting is mind-boggling. In the mayor's opinion, the great pilot giveaway is necessary to retain development in Precipiny, but current experience indicates that is not likely the case. Consider the following observations. A pilot has not been approved in Precipiny in almost two years, and the township is doing fine. Just two weeks ago, the mayor was bragging about how great the financial health of the township is. Township's tax base has increased in each of the last four years that the mayor has been in office. Since pilots are not included in the tax base, that means that there's been plenty of development in Precipiny without pilots. Many towns in Morris County, East Hanover and Morris Plains among them, do not offer pilots, but they're still seeing significant development in their towns. In fact, you can't drive anywhere in Morris County without seeing evidence of a construction boom, whether pilots were issued or not. In the unlikely event that some developer does abandon Precipiny because he was refused a pilot, there are plenty of developers waiting in the wings to build warehouses, apartments, mixed-use projects, condominiums, data center, and now we got cannabis testing buildings, and even gas stations. In summary, significant development has been taking place in Precipiny and throughout Morris County with or without pilots. Why should the administration, the council, and the taxpayers of Precipiny offer developers hundreds of millions of dollars in tax breaks when they are totally unnecessary? Thank you. Thank you.
That's what we get from the public.
Yeah. He's right. He's completely wrong.
Yeah, it's obvious.
He's on cheat.
Good evening, mayor, gentlemen.
May I please state your name?
Oh, I was getting it. Mayor, gentlemen, and lady, my name is Lisa Saladino, and I live in Lake Precipiny. I want to thank you for the opportunity to exercise my right to free speech. This week, I did some census research about our township, and there were two interesting statistics that stuck out to me, especially in relation to the representative governmental body of our town. Number one, 47% less than half of Precipiny residents are white. Number two, for every 95 males, there are 100 females in Precipiny. The majority of our residents are female and non-white. So that brings up a hypothetical question. Is it wise to be silent while bullying and culture wars are erupting in our town? A town where most of you sitting up here are in the minority based on those statistics that I just mentioned. Therefore, hypothetically, making a concerted effort to connect with the majority of voters and discuss this lack of representation and the ways that it fails to benefit them could be a problem for any of you. The majority of citizens in our town and our country want safety for all, equal rights for all, equal access to healthcare for all, affordable housing and food, and top-notch education for their children. Governments at every level should be representing its citizens. When the majority of the citizens don't feel heard, they hold so much power to change. It's called their vote. So turning up the temperature will not help us. Encouraging unity, empathy, and understanding will save us. We should have moments of silence. We should hold vigils. We should mourn for every victim of gun violence in this country and in the world. I'm choosing to use my time right now to honor a few of those victims by saying their names. Zeyon Berman, Ty Haskell Jenkins IV, Tiara Belizere Young, Shannon Rodriguez, Ronaldo Richmond, Brandon Howard, Octavio Myers, Miguel Ethan Soto Trader, Marlin Lane, Kenneth Adams Jr., Keith Deon Golson, Joseph Bohorquez Jr., John Michael Lee, Dedrick Arnold, Christian Barnes, Charlton Hudson Morris, Charles Charlie James Kirk, Sedell Miller, Carlos Bogan. Those were 19 names that I just read, and all of those victims were killed by guns on September 10th, one day of this month, just one day. I wanted to read 56 names, but it wouldn't have been enough time, and that was two days. And these victims ranged in age from 16 years old to 85 years old. They were from all over the country, and there have been hundreds more this month, and there have been tens of thousands more just in 2025.
30 seconds.
Including Melissa Hortman, 55 years old, her husband Mark, 58, and their four-year-old golden retriever, Gilbert, who were killed on June 14th of this year. In conclusion, I don't feel that I'm alone in requesting the council for a call to peace, unity, and civil discussion in our town. This is what we want, this is what people all over the country want. We don't want division. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
I have some material for the councilman, global change solutions, much of the base, biodiverse, multi-functional plant forests. This is for the tree ordinance that was presented over two years, September 2023 was when this whole thing started, and it's finally come to a conclusion. I have another study, scientific study, if you want it, I will email it to you, because the subject is much deeper than trees, it's biodiversity and climate mitigation. Intact forests in the United States, proforestation mitigates climate change and serves the greatest good.
Nick, do me a favor, speak into the mic. I want to be, you know you're loud enough, but I need it for the record.
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
You want me to start all over now?
No, you're fine.
It's, it's time to put the meaning, meaning of the title of Tree City and our recently acquired status in the Highlands Conformance under Highlands Water Protection and Planning Act. Precipiny is surrounded and bisected by roads, which means emissions and noise. Trees help mitigate that. Some facts overall. Today, 20% of the world's forest remains intact, free from logging and other forms of extraction of development. In the United States, in the lower 48, it is only an estimated 6% to 7% of total forest area still exists, with a higher portion in the east and a low, in the west and a lower portion in the east. New Jersey itself was logged and deforested three times before the Civil War, except for certain pockets of trees. And now, they're, they're actually being threatened by private sources, they're taking trees out of the forest, public forest in New Jersey. So, the Highlands Coalition, New Jersey Environmental Lobby, is going to push for New Jersey to adopt proforestation, which is you create forest reserves for carbon sequestration, water protection, and you let trees in forests that are managed, you let them grow older before they are harvested, and you don't take them all, you seed, you seed harvest, you leave certain trees. In, in the world today, with our impacts on, on the climate and the biosphere, we are only sequestering 31% of the emissions and the carbons that were from our society, oil and the gas. So, we're actually beginning a state of entropy, which is slow death. We all die if we keep up this endless growth and all, under unregulated capitalism. In the end, we're, we're just gonna, we're not gonna have a life not worth living. So, I'm glad that the tree ordinance is, is up, and next month, hopefully to be voted for. I had this flyer in my mailbox that somebody left. Look at this, Maryland Tree Experts. I did some research on the internet, I couldn't find these people licensed anywhere. And here, one flat rate to remove, trim as many trees as possible in a full day, so they can show up.
30 seconds, sir.
And they can do any, there's a lot of things that go on in Precipiny that, that nobody pays attention to. So we have to make sure that these contractors are registered in Precipiny and come to Precipiny before they do any work in Precipiny. And I won't waste my time telling the story of what happened to me when a neighbor hired a rogue, a Mexican circus that came to town and destroyed my property.
So, real quick, Nick, I just want to let you know, with regards to the individuals going door-to-door like this, they are required to obtain a solicitor's license from our office. Anybody going door-to-door to sell services has to obtain a solicitor's license, and they have to go a background check. So, if you see people doing that, contact the police, let them know, and then they will let them know that they have to come to Town Hall to obtain a solicitor's license. So there is a method and mechanism, it's just unfortunate people don't follow it. So, you know, if you do see them, let them know.
Especially if they run a circus.
Mm-hmm, I'm sorry?
Would you like this flyer?
I mean, you can give it to me, but if you can't find them, I'm sure I won't be able to find them.
Well, if they live in Maryland, so maybe DPS, Chicago. All right.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, seeing no one else, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. Be it resolved, all items with an asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial by the township council, be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's request, in which case the item... in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Approval of minutes. Um, motion to approve the minutes for...
Motion.
Fantastic, I'll take it. Second?
Sure, second.
Second, okay. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella, and this was a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August fifth and August nineteenth. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Glenn. Tonight's council meeting, several important actions will be taken that will help shape Precipity's future and improve our quality of life. I'd like to share a few of those highlights with you, but first, it has been a very productive week. Started well Saturday. We had the wet down for District One, District Six, and District Three, our fire districts, who helped maintain or, you know, keep us safe. And I have to, you know, it was a great time, and to be amongst the residents, it was it was pretty much awesome. And then we had the annual Fall Festival at the Smithfield Park, which was a huge success. A lot of residents came up to me and asked me, hey, listen, Mayor, can you keep the Fall Festival here at Smithfield? And I know somebody that were there, you saw, you know, all the reaching out. It was actually really great with regards. But I just want to make one thing clear, because the comment was made today with regards to, I guess, forty-seven percent white and all that kind of stuff. I treat people the same. I don't I don't dictate on what your nationality is or anything like that. You're a human being, I treat you like a human being. I don't look at statistics like that way. This community is for everybody in the town of Precipity. I was raised here, I grew up here, and to be totally honest with you, everybody gets treated the same. I don't care what your nationality is, it doesn't matter to me whatsoever, because that's how I was raised. I don't need statistics to tell me how to do things. I had a mother who taught me how to raise, how to do things the proper way, and that's what I would go by. And, you know, Father, I treat everybody the same, no matter what you are. It does not matter to me whatsoever. So our farmer's market season has come to an end, and it's been a great success this season, and it wrapped up pretty much. I think about two weeks ago was the last time. We're gonna expand it going into next year. So, you know, residents seem to love it. We have a Senior Citizen of the Year nomination, but I'll announce who those are coming up. And as you know, protecting our trees, the council will introduce a new tree ordinance that will update how trees are removed and replaced in our township. This ensures we balance the property rights with protecting the tree canopy that makes Precipity green and beautiful. Most importantly, this ensures we remain compliant with the NJDEP guidelines. I think that they asked us to do this ordinance about a year ago. Expanding open space. We approve the acquisition of additional properties for open space and recreation and flood protection. One of those you approved tonight, I want to thank the council, which is the St. Christopher's Track. Ten acres of land will be preserved and open space to perpetuity. So I'm pretty proud of that. My time as mayor, I believe that I secured about close to two hundred acres of land here in Precipity by purchasing the properties, of course, with the council's approval. Plus, environmental protection, the council has been presented with settlement and the litigation over PFAS contamination, I know Matt, you'll be happy about this, of our water supply. This is a big step forward in providing the township funds to help safeguard our clean drinking water. Investing in our infrastructure. Several bond ordinances were introduced to fund improvements to our roads, water, sewer, and golf facilities. These are responsible, long-term investments that keep our services strong and our community vibrant. At the beginning of 2021, when I took office again, Standards and Poor Rating Agency downgraded Precipity, I mean, I wasn't mayor then, excuse me, at the beginning of 2021, Standards and Poor Rating Agency downgraded Precipity to a negative outlook. Last year, S&amp;P Global Ratings revised its outlook from negative to stable on Precipity Trow Hills Township, New Jersey General Obligation GO, bonds outstanding. At the same time, S&amp;P Global Ratings affirmed the double-A long-term rating on the township's outstanding GO debt. I'm bringing this up for a reason, and I'll get to that shortly. Here's more directly from the fact sheet. The outlook revision reflects our view of the township's significantly improved financial position over the last two years after experienced material drawdown and reserves in fiscal 2020. The stable outlook reflects our view that management will continue to build up township's reserve levels while maintaining strong financial performances. Moody's this week. This week, we had a great call with Moody's, and they were very impressed by the progress that Precipity has made. The analyst talked about how bad things were a years, a few years ago, and how only a few years later, quote, "We are crushing it." I promised I would fix our finances, and we're all underway and being recognized by independent experts. You've been hearing and going around listening to individuals going around saying, "We raised taxes twenty-five percent." Okay? But they don't give you facts. And facts are important, especially when it comes to numbers, which I seem to know very well. Okay? The first year, they called it a tax levy. Okay, you get taxed based on your rate. So when I came back in 2022, we had a deficit of eight and a half million dollars. Okay? So we had to raise the tax levy fourteen point six-three percent. But your actual tax increase was three point, I think, sixty percent, because that's the rate. You get taxed on your rate, not on the levy. The levy, all the levy is, is the amount that your budget increased from one year to another. So those are the numbers they're using, which aren't a really good indicator of the financial situation. Now, as you heard, what I read today from our financial analysts saying Precipity's crushing it, and we are. We are crushing it. When you come in as a mayor, eight and a half million in debt, you have to fix it a certain way, or you just have no services. Well, I chose not to do that, not whatsoever. And if you notice, each year, the levy goes down significantly, and so is your tax rate. Why? Because that's fiscal management. And I want to thank, I want to thank the business administrator, I want to thank the council for moving Precipity forward. I'll be addressing those issues going forward with regards to the misinformation that residents get, because that's my job. I seem to always have to handle misinformation that goes out there, and I have no problem doing that, because I'm gonna give you the facts. That's all you're going to get are facts. You're gonna get the true numbers and the real numbers. Let me close with this. Well, first, before I close with that, I want to say that I've got a lot of phone calls with regards to electric vehicles, bicycles, and electric scooters. So I asked our township attorney to look into, see if we can put an ordinance in effect with regards to the safety of our children and the safety of our pedestrians, safety of the drivers, everything included. One thing we did here in Precipity, I take public safety very seriously. Everybody knows that. When you go from eighty-one police officers to a hundred now, our town's being, you know, the public safety in our town has increased, our crime rate has gone down, and stuff like that. So anyway, I just want to close with this. My dear friend's birthday is tomorrow, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. Frank, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Frank.
Okay. Hold on. I'm gonna introduce you, you know?
Oh, wait.
It's a big deal here, Judy.
Wait, wait.
Town Council.
Do my report, or are we gonna do the tree thing?
It's, right now, this is a big deal. I was gonna say, Judy, tree presentation, right there. See that? I was gonna give you the, you know, before you started.
I thought we were gonna do our reports, and then...
Let's, let's, I think we should get right to it, unless you want to do reports. And Frank, happy ninety-fifth, pal. Appreciate it.
Don't exaggerate, it's only eight.
I thought we would do our reports and then do the presentation.
If you'd like to do that, we could do that.
Yeah.
No problem.
The mayor was talking about...
We can do that.
An ordinance for e-bikes and stuff, and I was thinking...
Oh, yeah, we need that.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And some of the other municipalities were talking about the same. Yesterday, you heard that a person, a child in Precipity was on an electric scooter and veered onto oncoming traffic and got hit. Yesterday also, a child in Scotch Plains got killed on an electric bike. And so in the traffic meeting, we were discussing maybe having, I think, Dave Chevalier, is that his name, officer?
Cabalier, I think.
Yeah. He had done a session with young people and older people on safety in the libraries. We were talking about maybe doing something like that, but an ordinance or something would be good. Some townships are doing that, and I think that we need to do that, because people are crazy. And I'd like to see that picture, because I'm on my rain road, and the kids are just driving crazy, and we need that. All right. My other part of my report is a shout out to Joe Janarone, who helped get the stairs and the Precipity Child Daycare Center fixed. They look beautiful with the nice regulatory gates that they need. They were a mess for a long, long time. And to your point, to, we were talking about, this is my personal comment that I'm gonna make, and this is unfortunate, and this has nothing to do with the mayor or anybody in this town. It's just the overall climate that we've been in. I just wanted to say that, for me personally, in recent days, I have received several non-factual and very non-constructive and some antagonistic comments online, on social media. And for the record, I just want to know, I'm not gonna engage in them, these unsolicited comments. So if I just don't answer or pull out or block people, it's not because I just, as a councilperson, I'm not engaging. I choose not to have those kinds of conversations. So I just wanted to put that on the record. So let's get to trees, or we get to Frank. Birthday is tomorrow.
Is it people just attacking you?
It's just, it's just the general atmosphere that is today for everyone. It's just what you see every day, everywhere.
Just attacking you?
Not real, and not just me.
Okay.
No, it's just, just the conversations that go on. But, you know, and it's not, I'm just saying, I will not partake in that kind of thing.
Here's what I'll give you. I know exactly what you feel, because I constantly get attacked.
Yeah.
No matter what, and it's always you're anti-Semitic, you're a misogynist, you're this, you're that, because I don't agree with you. I'm not any of those things, first of all.
Right. You can't win.
But I don't respond, because I don't respond.
Right. Okay.
Trees.
Or you. Okay, trees. So the long-awaited tree ordinance that the whole environmental committee has been working on, the tree ordinance that DEP wanted us to do for stormwater control, which has been on the rise because of climate change. And, there you go, Janice.
Yeah, I just want to start the presentation with comments.
Ms. McCarthy, could I just have you in the...
I'm sorry. I just want to start tonight with comments from Mr. Giovinelli. Mr. Giovinelli was very instrumental in helping the environmental committee create the draft ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Janice.
You gotta talk into the...
Council members, thank you, Judy. And thank you, everyone, for coming today. I am Paul Giovinelli. I've got a lifelong passion for trees, although I have never had any real formal education in it. I love them, I think they're magnificent. Trees are the largest living organism on our planet. Their presence is undeniable. You can see them everywhere. Undisturbed, they can live for hundreds of years, and they're seemingly passive, but they're far, far from passive. We see their changes every autumn. In addition to that, there is much, much more than just the leaf changes. By their photosynthesis, they take carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere and turn it into oxygen, as much as forty-eight pounds a year.
Mr. Giovinelli, can I ask that you hold the mic and speak into it? Only because I want to make sure I threw up completely. It's a very good speech, so we'd like it on the record.
And I think it's forty-eight tons?
Pounds.
Pounds.
Pounds. That's through photosynthesis.
What time is that?
Through their growth, trees sequester carbon, as much as one ton per tree. Think of how many trees there are and how many tons that is. And that is sequestered until they're cut down, in which case the carbon is then re-released into the environment. Trees act as unique hosts for a number of insects, too. For example, an oak tree is the preferred and specific species for over five hundred different species of moths and butterflies. If we didn't have oaks, we wouldn't have them, and then we wouldn't have the various wildlife that depend upon that particular insect for food. But more to our conversation today, trees are instrumental in stormwater control and runoff. For example, think of when it rains and a tree intercepts the rainfall as it comes down, it slows it. By slowing it, it gives the ground an opportunity to absorb that precipitation, as opposed to, for example, a driveway where it comes down and just runs off. This reduced runoff also gives the groundwater an opportunity to absorb it. By absorbing it, these trees also provide a filter, a filter for the water which gets into our rivers, streams, and ponds. Trees play this vital role without any input from us. It is their natural sense of what they do. So healthy trees in Precipity and anywhere are not just helpful. Healthy trees are essential, both to the water cycle and to our community. They provide for clean water, flood control, and climate mitigation. I want to thank you for paying attention to these few facts about trees, and I hope you think more of them as partners rather than just as passive actors in our environment. Janice?
Thank you.
Well, I would say, as the video points out, so we don't have one. I don't think we could set it up, right?
Apple, no, I'm sorry, I don't have anything that translates. What do you mean?
No, no.
Uh, no, no.
So, you know, besides trees adding beauty and order to our streets and neighborhoods, they provide economic, environmental, and social benefits. As Paul just pointed out, they significantly improve air quality by absorbing tons of carbon dioxide. They hold stormwater that reduces flooding. They mitigate runoff. They prevent soil erosion. They improve water quality. They lower energy costs by, as, you know, there's different statistics, twenty-five to thirty-five percent. They make people more healthy. They make streets safer by calming traffic. They increase the value of homes. They stimulate local economies, and they create more vibrant town centers. So for those and other reasons, trees are just too important to cut down indiscriminately. And while parks and forestry works to mitigate that, they don't have a comprehensive tree ordinance that, that provides a legal framework to set standards for effective tree management. So, oh, and the ordinance is also vital to the planning board decisions during construction projects to maximize the preservation and the protection of trees. So it was in two thousand twenty-four that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection mandated that all New Jersey municipalities adopt and enforce a tree removal and replace ordinance. And actually, research has shown in New Jersey, and really across America, across the United States, that there is a correlation between effective tree management, healthier environments, and stronger, more prosperous local economies. So, so I think that the success of a tree ordinance is really contingent on a clearly defined, consistent, and properly-staffed enforcement system. So it was in the fall of two thousand twenty-three that the... So it was in the fall of 2023 that the environmental committee researched what are considered to be the best ordinances, the best municipal ordinances in New Jersey. And with the help of Mr. Giovinelli, we drafted an ordinance. We worked with Jim Walsh to edit and finalize the ordinance. And then in 2025, business administrator Cryan met with Councilwoman Hernandez, who's committee's council liaison, and Mr. Giovinelli, and reviewed Mr. Cryan's suggested edits to the draft. So that's where we are. And the intent of the presentation tonight is to better understand the critical role that trees play in our township's infrastructure and development, and how essential a enforced and clearly drafted tree ordinance is to protecting our environment, to creating a healthier community, and to achieve significant financial returns. So, is there any questions or comments? If not, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you.
What happened to the video? What happened to the video?
Well, you know, actually, I have a Mac.
We don't have a cord.
We don't have the right hookup. Technology, you know.
Yeah.
I think Justin has a question.
Yeah.
Janice, I think Justin has a question.
Yeah, I just have some questions. So my, my first question is, you know, well, you know, first, thank you for, for coming and presenting. Today, if a resident wants to remove a tree, what is the fee for them to do that?
I'm not sure. I, I don't know. I think that...
I don't think there is one, correct?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a permit structure right now.
There's no, there's no fee.
As far as, as far as I know, there's not.
Right. So there's no fee, there's no permit.
Right.
To do so. So can you walk me through under this proposed ordinance, if I'm a resident and I decide I want to remove some trees on my property, what, what are the, the fees and what's the process look like?
Well, you have that. First of all, Justin, we, we had the ordinance, but we haven't had it for months because we, it was in the administration for quite some time. So we just got it also. So we have to review it, too.
Okay.
So we, right?
Yes.
Mr. Cryan, we just got it. We've had, we've hadn't had it in our hands for months, so I don't know what changes might have been made.
And, and to add to that, just to, for Janice and, and then...
So why are we introducing something we haven't reviewed?
No, I was just going to say that the public, the council has it, you guys have it, you guys have had it.
We have to review it.
They don't, the public doesn't get it until after introduction.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask you that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it says, it says here that if I'm a resident and I want to remove, I want to remove, for more than two non-significant trees in a 12-month period that have a breast height of four to 12 feet, at least one tree is going to have to be paid for. And it looks like the fee here to do that is you have to pay the, the market cost of whatever tree is. Is that correct?
You have the ordinance.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's what I see, and, and if, and if your property is not suitable for putting a replacement tree on your property for whatever reason, then you have to pay a fee of $250 to go into a tree fund. So, you know, my, my concern here is for, you know, people that move to town, people that are renovating properties and they have to adjust healthy trees, unfortunately, when you get up to a tree that is 33 feet or greater, four trees, you're, you're talking about almost $1,000 that somebody is going to have to pay. So my, my worry is that this is, this is a new, a new large tax that could be potentially paid by a lot of residents.
Well, first of all, as I said, I haven't really seen the tree ordinance, but just let me explain that when you have trees on your property, first of all, when you remove those trees, as I just said, home values are increased by trees, and that's through the National Realtors Association by, you know, various organizations. So first of all, if you remove a tree on your property and there's no professional evaluation of removing that tree from your property, then you really have no idea of how that tree is going to affect your neighbor's property. Now, a tree can hold up to 100 gallons of water. So you take two trees down on your property that haven't been evaluated, where does that 100 gallons of water or 200 water, gallons of water go? There has to be some professional evaluation when somebody is going to remove a tree.
But why, why do we not trust residents to make that decision for themselves?
Because you can't. Because you can't.
You can't.
Because it's gonna, it could flood out your neighbor's basement.
Who are you to tell me what I can and can't do with my own property? That's my big, my big problem with this proposed ordinance is that it's, you know, taking small slices of decision-making away from our residents and forcing them to bear a lot of cost to do so.
Justin, don't argue with her. Let's look at it and get the questions. This is the whole state. This is not just, this is not Parsippany doing this. This is the state, and there's a mechanism that we, that is in there for there to be another alternative within Parsippany to help with there. There's, there's another mechanism, I believe, with the Parks and Forestry, right? For, for tree, that to work something out with the Parks and Forestry Department in there, in someplace in there.
Well, the fact is, you know, is there's a combination of...
Yeah, there's other ways to work with the Parks and Forestry Department. It's not just one way of replacement or paying $200 per tree. It's not just that.
I mean, that's what I see. And this was just given to me, you know, five minutes before the meeting, because I did ask Colette for the backup prior. Yeah, I mean, you know, upfront, I'm, I'm not a fan of this. You know, we'll do some, I'll do some more research, and then at the next council meeting, we can have a more thorough discussion. But I, I don't really like the cost that residents are going to have to bear to, to cooperate with this ordinance.
Well, just let me explain that. We're talking about significant savings by effective tree management, and these are studies done by well-regarded organizations, colleges, and universities. So there's no question that each of these things that were mentioned, the stormwater, the air quality, the increase in value of homes, you can't just select one thing when you're talking about a combination of costs and revenues.
Guys, in the back.
That improve, that, that improve overall.
In the back, guys. We have a presentation.
So I think you've got to look at the whole picture and not just one part of this, because it's all, it's all a combination of things. And each of those factors has a financial benefit, and those financial benefits are put into equation and come up with a result that shows what the benefit to the town is. You know, as, as homes increase, that increases the tax base. That's a value to the town. And it is the responsibility of everybody here to do what's best for the town. And this, by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, is, is cold stormwater.
Well...
And it just is, it's a benefit to, to the community as a whole.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, what price do you pay for cleaner air, cleaner water, increased in homes?
The price that I'm willing to pay.
Right.
And it's up to me to, to determine that, not some distant bureaucrat in Trenton that's going to tell us as a local municipality what we can and can't do with how our residents should experience property rights in Parsippany. I think it's a really important issue. And, and the other thing is that, you know, look, you know, forcing people to pay if they don't agree with this ordinance, I think is just, you know, I understand you're trying to sell this under the guise of it serving the, the public good, but I trust our residents, and I, I think that, you know, there's nothing wrong with our ordinance as it stands today. I don't see regular people, but we, we have an ordinance, it's just...
It's a mandate. It's not something that we're selling, it's a mandate.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say, at this particular point in time, if we can, because we have a long meeting and we have a lot of stuff I got to read through, so...
Yeah, so, you know, I think this is another debate, and I think you're arguing something else, actually.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Any other, anything else from Township Council? Okay, moving along to Township Attorney.
Uh, no report to see the council president.
Thank you, Mr. Levery. Moving along to Business Administrator Cryan.
Thank you, Council President and Council. First, regarding the tree ordinance, this is mandated by the state. We're out of compliance right now. That's was, that was the impetus for this. My portion, and thank you to Paul and to Judy and to Janice and the whole team for everything that you did, and to Jimmy Walsh, who did a lot of this. What I did when I took it, when I received it, right around the time that Jimmy retired, was I tried to clean it up a little bit. It was, to me, it was a bit confusing, kind of a little all over the place. Everything was in there, but it was like, there was just, it was, you know, like the Matrix, there was too much going on with it. So I updated the draft based on towns, our neighbors. I wanted to make sure that we were doing similar to what our neighbors were doing. With the basis of it, they drafted suggestions from the DEP, because they sent out a suggested ordinance for this. So I, I used Florham Park, Denville, Morris Township, Madison, Byram Township, towns that at the time had clear and understandable and robust tree ordinances. But I didn't change an incredible amount. I just moved things around and kept things in line with what our neighbors were doing. That's it. Then I sent it over to, I, I met with Paul and, and Judy and explained some of those changes. I sent it over to our Township Engineer and our new Parks and Forestry Superintendent for their input, and to our zoning officer as well, to make sure that they were understanding of it and agreeing with it. There was a large, there was a lot of back and forth over a number of months. There was a lot of questions asked. Some of the fees and some of the inches of the trees were reduced to make it easier for residents to comply with. For the most part, if you take a tree down, you can replace a tree and you don't have to pay for a replacement. If you can't replace the tree on your site, the ordinance, like the other ordinances that were reviewed, suggest giving to a tree fund that allows for trees on other properties. It's a normal process that creates safety, too, because sometimes you'll have a tree in the right of way on a corner, and you're not able to replace it there. So giving to a fund that can replace it in a, you know, vacant lot somewhere else makes sense. Trees are, I always, you know, get a kick out of it, really, because in my time in government, I've never really experienced such emotions with something. And trees do it on both sides, property rights, tree hugging, whatever you want to call it, the extremes. It creates some incredible extremes. But the root of this is the mandate from the DEP to update our ordinances in order to mitigate runoff and help combat flooding. Those are the main purposes of this. And there's other really good benefits that were mentioned by Janice and Paul. So that's all I have on that. If you have a, please read it over. If there's any questions, please, you know, send them to me and to Justin, Liza, our Township Engineer and Head of Public Works now, who has an understanding of this as well. And that's really all I have.
Thank you.
I have no report. Moving along to ordinance's first reading. Ordinance 2025-19, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the Township of Presippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris State of New Jersey. The Township appropriating $11,130,720, therefore, including a $261,720 State of New Jersey Department of Transportation grant and reappraisal of excess bond and note proceeds in the amount of $3,959,3,808, and authorizing the issuance of $10,360,700 bonds per notes of the Township to finance part of the cost thereof. Okay. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township of Presippany Troy Hills held on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms., Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2025-20, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the water utility of the Township of Presippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris State of New Jersey appropriating $7,575,000 thereof, therefore, a portion of which appropriation includes the reappraisal of bond and note proceeds in the amount of $2,767,844.30, and authorizing the issuance of $4,7,155.70 in bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township of Presippany Troy Hills held on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2025-21, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the sewer utility of the Township of Presippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris State of New Jersey appropriating $6,815,000, therefore, a portion of which appropriation includes the reappraisal of excess bond and note proceeds in the amount of $19,414.70, and authorizing the issuance of $6,795,585.30 in bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township of Presippany Troy Hills held on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karipe?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2025-22, bond ordinance providing for various 2025 capital acquisitions and improvements for the golf utility of the Township of Presippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris State of New Jersey appropriating $447,000, therefore, a portion of which appropriation includes the reappraisal of excess bond and note proceeds in the amount of $25,325.95, and authorizing the issuance of $421,674.05 in bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof. Be it resolved that above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Presippany Troy Hills held on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karipe? Okay, moving along. Ordinance, motion passes, by the way. Ordinance 2025-23. Bond Ordinance Amending Restating Bond Ordinance Number 2023-19, finally adopted by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey. The Township on September 25, 2023, as further amended and supplemented by Bond Ordinance Number 2024-17, finally adopted by the Township Council of the Township. On September 24, 2024, to increase the total appropriation therein from $1,700,000 to $2,500,000, to increase the total debt authorized from $1,700,000 to $2,500,000, to appropriate a United States Environmental Protection Agency grant expected to be received in the amount of $1,203,507.50 to authorize the execution delivery of an agreement for the grant. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting at the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution, please?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath? Mr. Musella? Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, motion passes. Ordinance 2025-24. An Order to the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 124, Section 5, entitled "Fees." Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting at the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills held on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution, please?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella? Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2025-25. An Order to the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 392, entitled "Trees," to establish a process by which trees can be removed and replaced within the municipality. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting at the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills held on September 23, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 21, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving along to the non-consent agenda. R2025-164. Authorizing the Use of Competitive Contracting for Emergency Medical Service Billing and Collection Services. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi? Yes. Motion passes. R2025-165. Offer Voluntary Employee Benefits Through Pierce Insurance. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. R2025-166. Authorizing the Settlement of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills Litigation Regarding PFAS Water Providers. Docket Number 2:24-CV-04444-RMG.
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, I appreciate that. Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Now, that's a team player. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to R2025-167. Consenting to the Change in Corporate Ownership of Parsippany Logistics Park Owner, LLC, with respect to the redevelopment of the property located at Block 226, Lots 3 and 3.2 on the official tax map of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.